Good evening. Welcome to the June 4, 2024 Gilbert Town Council meeting. I will call this meeting to order and we will start with an invocation by Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for the opportunity to be gathered together this evening. We're thankful as members of this council, members of the public who are here to participate in discussing the matters of importance to this great town. We pray that thy Spirit will be here, that we will feel inspired in the things that we say and do, and that we will be comforting to one another, will be understanding, and be mindful of the means to find a way to build this community and continue to be an excellent place for our families and for those who visit to feel of our strength. We pray that thou will help us to always be mindful of thee and the help that we receive from thee. And we pray for those who are seeking thee at all times, that they may be touched by thy Spirit. Again, we thank thee for this time together, and we pray for the inspiration that we needed to make these decisions and to work with one another. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Vice Mayor, it looks like you're also leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Clerk Chevelli Herrera, could you please call the role?
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski. Councilmember Kathy Toki.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson. A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Moving on, we have no presentations and proclamations for this evening, which is really unusual. We'll move right into our public hearing. We have five items on our public hearing agenda this evening. Are there any items that the council would like to have pulled off of the public hearing agenda? I'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, I would accept, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to accept items one through five.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept items one through five.
I have a motion by Councilmember Toki, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to our next portion of our agenda, so I need to recess our regular meeting and convene in a special meeting. We have three items that we'll be discussing. Number six is elections. Consider adoption of resolution number forty-four seventy-seven. Item seven is the budget and ordinance number twenty-nine oh four with the tax levy for FY twenty-twenty-five. And item eight is the budget. Starting with item six, does anybody request or require a presentation on that? Or would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, could we have just a very quick presentation so that the public would understand what this election's for?
Sure. Thank you. See Kelly Faust approaching the podium. Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll just give a brief presentation on this. I know we had another public hearing a couple of weeks ago on this topic. Perfect. So this is on, related to the state imposed expenditure limit, which are rules from the nineteen-seventies and eighties in the Arizona Constitution. There are two questions that will likely be on the ballot, depending on the vote that council does tonight. One of them is a permanent base adjustment, and one of them is a capital projects accumulation fund. Voters will decide on both questions. They can't approve both. It is not an either-or option. With the state imposed expenditure limit, the state has rules that put a limit on the amount that the town can spend each year. It is not related to the amount of revenues that we have. It is based off of what our budget was in fiscal year nineteen-eighty, and then it increases every year based on inflation and population. It does not change for changes in service. If the town puts in a water plant instead of wells, adds libraries, adds parks, any of that is not calculated into the expenditure limitation calculation that the state has. So Gilbert's expenditure limitation is calculated, and then we have to report back every year what that is. As you're aware, Gilbert has changed substantially since nineteen ninety-eight, which is when voters last approved a change, a permanent base adjustment to the state expenditure limitation. We've added fire stations, wastewater water treatment plant, public safety buildings, environmental compliance, pools, libraries, lots of things have changed since nineteen ninety-eight. With the permanent basement adjustment that's being requested, it would change that base calculation number up by one point five million dollars. And then you can see on the graph here how that would be compared to now if, if the fiscal twenty-four limitation had the change that's requested in place. Gilbert would still be at the bottom. We would have a per capita expenditure limit of about thirty-two hundred dollars a citizen, right above Glendale, but still bottom of the list compared to all of the other communities in the valley. So this change is not a dramatic change compared to what other cities are doing around the valley. It is also not a tax increase. It will make no difference in the revenues that Gilbert has, or those are different decisions that the council would have to make. This is simply a limit on expenditures themselves. The second question on the ballot, and this is what the public hearing tonight was about, is a capital projects accumulation fund. It allows for expenditures on capital projects to not count against the expenditure limit. If you cash fund projects, if the town cash funds projects, that cash counts against the expenditure limit. A way around that is that projects can be financed through bond funding, and then the bond finance projects don't count against the expenditure limit. But then you have to pay interest and financing costs associated with the bonds. So it's less effective with taxpayer dollars, but it is an option. If the town goes over the state imposed expenditure limit, there are heavy penalties. The state can withhold our state shared income tax revenues and divide them out to all of the other cities and towns, not including Gilbert. With the amount of money that the town gets from our state shared revenues, it could be a penalty up to about sixty million dollars per year, so a very large amount that we would like to avoid. Some quick Mythbusters to make sure that we are very clear. These questions are not tax increases. They will not change Gilbert's revenues at all. Gilbert will still be required to maintain a balanced budget, and we cannot spend money that we don't have. We can only spend money that we do have. These questions also have nothing to do with the federal debt ceiling. In case you've heard any of those rumors, completely separate issues. Timeline, council approved the permanent base adjustment to go to the voters on the May seventh meeting. There are the two public hearings required for this item, May twenty-first and then today. And now vote, council needs to take a vote on whether to have this item go to the ballot for voters to be able to decide on at the November fifth election. We would like voters to be as educated as possible on these odd rules from the seventies. So there is information on our website, gilbertaz.gov/ballettguide for voters to get more information. We will continue to do public outreach with that educational material, and it will be a very long ballot coming up. And so we do encourage everybody to make sure to look towards the end of the ballot to find these two important questions for Gilbert and fill them in as they feel best. With that, are there any questions?
I love the graphic. I'm sorry. I was laughing at that because we have been told that it's going to be a three or four-page-long ballot for the general election in November. So we're not making fun. We're just trying to be realistic about it. Any comments or questions for Kelly? Seeing none. Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate it. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion on item six, elections, to consider adoption of resolution number four-four-seven-seven, proposing a capital project accumulation fund exemption to the expenditure limitation prescribed by Article nine, thank you, Article nine, section twenty of the Constitution of Arizona, be submitted to the voters of the town of Gilbert at the general election on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second, I have a motion by Councilmember Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. And the motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item seven, budget discussion on ordinance number twenty-nine oh four, this is the setting of the secondary property tax levy for FY twenty-twenty-five at thirty-three million, excuse me, thirty-three billion, no, million, million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars, period. Any comments or questions? I know I had to look at the decimals on the, any, would anyone like to hear from Kelly? A short presentation from Kelly. Kelly, can you please make a short presentation on the tax levy? Very good for informational purposes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Would it be all right if I did presentation on budget and tax together?
I think that would be great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. This is the night we do our final budget adoption. Gilbert continues to be a best-in-class city with lots of accolades across all of the different sectors that we work with. And we continue to do our zero-base budgeting, where we look at a third of the town every year, make sure that we dial in those numbers to what they need to provide those services. With inflation, the last couple of years, we've actually had to add money to the budgets because it's been a very tough couple of years. Our budget process is long. It takes about a year to go through. We kick it off in September. We have lots of input from the departments, financial retreat, town manager reviews the budget, and then we have study sessions with council. Preliminary budget adoption was in May, and then today is our final budget adoption in June. There are forty-six, just over forty-six recommended positions in the recommended budget that's before you. And your packets earlier have had details on business case for each of those positions. The largest part of our budget is the capital improvement projects. It is about one point six billion dollars worth of all of the spending that we do is that investment in capital projects. The largest areas are our street improvements and our water system improvements. We've bonded in both of those areas to help with the projects that are needed there. If we look at carryforward versus new, about one point two billion dollars of the budget are carryforward projects, so projects we've already started and are working on and will continue to work on because these are large projects. They take more than one year to complete. And then about five hundred thousand dollars of additional projects are added for new projects this year. We have incorporated the changes that were requested by council at the preliminary budget adoption, which is the South Gilbert Rec Center was moved out to fiscal twenty-nine, and then the Gilbert Pool was reduced to a thirty-million-dollar budget and was included in years six through ten. You won't see any changes in the final budget number because both of these projects are out into the future years for planning purposes, so the number remains the same for the fiscal twenty-five budget. Fiscal twenty-four versus twenty-five, there's about three hundred million dollars worth of difference there. The majority of that is on that bottom line, the capital projects, which is about two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars of that difference. For property tax that's needed, the levy is three hundred, or thirty-three million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And that does maintain the ninety-eight cent rate that we have had for, this will be the second year, and it will provide the money that's needed for the debt service payments. The county was involved with a class action lawsuit and has to make refunds on behalf of the town related to that lawsuit, about one point five million dollars. So our fund balance will actually go down in this fund in order to make all of the payments that are needed for next year. The refunds were a bit higher than we had initially anticipated, but this tax rate will allow us to make all of the things that we need, plus the fund balance. The milestones that we have, May seventh was our study session and the levy for property tax. Then we had our preliminary budget and CIP review on May twenty-first. This is the final step in the adoption process, which is final budget adoption, final CIP adoption, and the final tax levy adoption. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions or comments? This is item seven and item eight that we're discussing this evening. Seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion on item number seven?
I'd like to make a motion on item number seven, budget, to consider hearing and consider adoption of ordinance number twenty-nine oh four, setting the secondary property tax levy for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five at thirty-three million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Can I have a second? Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Buckley, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item eight, budget. Any comments, questions, concerns that you'd like to discuss? On the budget?
I'd like to make a motion to accept budget item eight with the resolution as presented on the dais. And I will read the resolution. Whereas ARS nine dash two-three-two point zero-one provides the town council only by ordinance or resolution prescribed salary to be paid to the mayor and council members of the town for performance of elected official duties. And whereas the town, whereas the Gilbert Municipal Code, section one dash three-nine, provides that the compensation for elected officers of the town shall be fixed by resolution of the town council, provided said compensation may not be increased or decreased, except in conformance with the provisions of the Arizona Constitution, Article Four, Part Two, Section Seventeen. And whereas the town council approved Resolution thirty-nine sixty-three on April fifth, twenty-eighteen, setting the compensation for the mayor at forty-three thousand, six-thirty-one per year and council members at twenty-one thousand and twelve dollars per year, which amounts have not changed since they were approved in twenty-eighteen. And whereas the town council believes it to be in the best interests of the community to maintain market competitiveness, to attract qualified individuals for elected positions within Gilbert. And whereas the town council desires the just compensation of the mayor and council members as provided herein, in conformance with the Arizona Constitutional, Article Four, Part Two, Section Seventeen. And whereas to continue to ensure market competitiveness and the attraction of qualified individuals for elected positions within Gilbert, a modification to the compensation received by the mayor and council members is warranted, that takes both into account changes in the market and meets the requirements of the Arizona Constitution, state law, and town code. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the town of Gilbert. Section one, effective beginning in the first town employee pay period occurring after the date of the first town council meeting in January twenty-twenty-five, the annual salary of the office of mayor will be adjusted to sixty-nine thousand, two-seventy-five fifty-four per year, and the annual salary of the office of council member shall be adjusted to fifty-three thousand, two-eighty-eight eighty-eight per year. Section two, beginning in the year twenty-twenty-six and every even-numbered year thereafter, the annual salary of the office of council member shall be adjusted to equal the salary of the lowest-paid, full-time salaried employee of the town, effective at the beginning of the first full-town employee pay period occurring after the date of the first town council meeting in January, and in any odd-numbered year in which a council member will commence a new term of office. Section three, beginning in twenty-twenty, the year twenty-twenty-eight, and every four years thereafter, the annual salary of the office of mayor shall be adjusted to one point three times the salary of the lowest-paid, full-time salaried employee at the town, effective at the beginning of the first full-town employee pay period occurring after the date of the first town council meeting in January, and in any odd-numbered year in which the mayor will commence a new term of office. Four, all resolutions and endorse, and ordinances and parts of resolutions and ordinances in conflict with provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. Section five, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this resolution is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think you need a second before we can discuss. I just want to ensure that we have a chance to discuss this before we go right to the vote.
Yeah, we need an opportunity to discuss this.
So was somebody planning on making a second?
I'll second that.
So whenever you're ready, Mayor, I'm ready to have a conversation.
Please.
Thank you.
Start.
First, for the public, I just want you to know, this is the first time I've seen this sitting in front of me today, and the first I've heard of these numbers. And so I'm a little bit at a loss by this. So I think I'd like to have a conversation, especially as it's tied to the entire budget. So a couple of my comments, first and foremost, is that this, I want to start by saying that this council, the seven members sitting here today, this council, the seven members sitting here today, are the most active council that I've seen in the 30 years that I've been coming to these meetings, as far as attending so many meetings during the week and into the night to learn everything there is to learn. And I think you can see the progress of that by some of the votes that we've been able to make on even the tax levy this year, that they're very committed. So I don't ever want to take away from the amount of time that's put into this position. It can be a full-time job, there's no doubt. It's up to each of us how much time we want to put into it, and I have no doubt put a full-time effort into this. Saying that, though, this position is paid. School boards aren't paid. There's a lot of other different positions in our community that aren't paid. So this is not a position that this is a career. This is not your salary that's going to make sure that you can make a living. And so I'm a little uncomfortable kind of moving in that direction, but I was involved in this community for over 30 years, actively involved in my role as the chamber, and I made the decision, knowing that myself, that I am going to put full time into, no matter what I do, even on a volunteer basis, that's what I will do. And I knew I couldn't do that and hold a full-time job. I knew it. I couldn't put what I needed to do that. So I waited until I retired for that very reason, so that I knew that I had time. Some people on this council I know have full-time jobs, or they own their own business, and it is a detriment to them. I understand all of that, but I think that we all understood that going in. So that shouldn't have been a surprise, the salary. I know that anytime this has come up in the past, anybody up on this dais has been almost crucified for having a conversation about raising our taxes, how dare us? So the fact that it's coming forward is a surprise to me. And it's not that I don't believe we should look at compensation and we should be looking at this long-term, but it's not why we're here. And I think the timing of this is very unfortunate because this council has had to make horribly hard decisions that impact our everyday citizens when it comes to the rates that we're having to charge because we have to cover our cost. And I think it is a very bad look for us to ask our residents to dig in their pockets to help us pay for basic services. That's what we're asking them to pay for, is the basic services that we provide while we give ourselves the raise. So I'm having a little problem putting my arms around this because this is the first time I've seen it. So here's, here's the open, transparent conversations that everybody wants us to have, and it's right here. I believe that if we feel this is important, because I'm a no, but I will tell you, I am trying to find, is there a compromise in this in any way? Years ago, the council removed the ability for the council to receive what is called CPI, or its inflation index, every year. And that I could agree to coming back, that there should be an increase as it costs, as cost of living. I don't have a problem with that, and we could do that right away. If, no matter which way you dice it, no matter which side of the argument you are on tonight, there's questions about, are we voting in a raise for ourselves? And we are. I'm not going to be here, so it doesn't bother me one way or the other. I mean, from a financial standpoint, it's not going to impact me one way or the other. However, if we are truly wanting to make this not about us individually, then I would consider that we change this ordinance or this resolution so that it would say increases would go, not the CPI, CPI could go in right away, that the increases to the salary that are recommended would go into effect in January 2027, which is after, not this election, the next election. There won't be anybody up here, most likely, that would benefit from that. Could be, but chances aren't. Nobody on this dais would benefit from that increase if we're really looking at that argument about voting ourselves a raise. So I'm not comfortable. I'd rather not even vote on this today. If you're making me vote on it, this is where I am, and I'll probably have more to say after I hear from others. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. For me, it's, it's really a philosophical difference. Are we here to provide a service to our community, which is what I feel that I am here to do? And it's not about the salary, it's never been about the salary. When I started in this community as a volunteer on the Planning Commission, I served 14 years as a volunteer, attending typically two meetings a month from 2000 to 2006, completely unpaid as a volunteer. And those meetings were five at 6 o'clock at night till midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning. That was a volunteer. When I decided to run for council, like Councilmember Tilke mentioned, I knew where I was in life. My daughter had graduated high school. It wasn't about the pay. I knew what the work was going to be, and it was never about what the pay was going to be, ever. And we've had council members that have sat here on this dais with me that have said you shouldn't get paid anything, and I disagree with that. But I do feel that it needs to be kept in check, and in this community, it is about serving the community in the way that you choose to serve. And it's the first thing that I typically talk to people about is, you give to the position what you choose to give to the position and what you have available to give to the position. I, I was shocked when I saw this resolution ended to the end, added to the end of our budget packet at 5:30 last night. If I have to vote no on our budget this year because of this resolution, that's going to really just break my heart. I, I don't think it's fair to the public, the way that this was added to our packet. It wasn't done as an addendum, it was just added as two additional pages to our packet, like I said, at 5:30 last night. As a resolution, it should have been put on separately. We should have had time to put this out as notice to the community so that we can be completely transparent and give people the opportunity to come in and speak about whether or not they think the mayor and council should be getting raises. We removed the automatic increase back in 2018, and we lowered the council pay back to what it had been previously and left the mayor's pay where it was because it was agreed that, and I was a council member at the time, it was agreed that the mayor's job really is a full-time job. And I will tell you, I work probably 40 to 60 hours a week in this position, and I'm very lucky that I have a very good husband at home that we go without so that I can do this position. I drive a 10-year-old car, we live in a very modest home, I do not splurge on things, and I still choose not to take the insurance under the town because I don't want to cost the town more, I don't want to cost the taxpayers more. I pay a lot of my own travel because I choose to do that, because I see this as a service from my heart and soul to this community and not as a job. This should never be viewed to anybody as a job, that you're looking at it as an hourly wage. And like Councilmember Tilke said, I won't be here in January, so whatever happens and goes into effect isn't going to affect me, but it will affect the majority of the people sitting up here. We have literally just increased water fees and garbage fees for our residents, we're increasing our system development fees for our development community. This is not the appropriate time to be having this conversation, in my opinion. And in this budget, we've included an increase in travel for mayor and council. The other thing, because I just saw these numbers just now, as the council member read them to us, this doesn't consider the compensation that we receive as mayor and council. There's other things that are added on to the actual pay and salary. There is retirement that the town is responsible to pay. There are insurance fees that the town is responsible to pay on top of that. We get a car allowance for 300 or 600 miles a month on top of that. So even though my salary is $43,000, I'm getting an extra $4,800 a year for the car allowance. There's retirement that the town has to pay on my behalf. Like I said, I choose not to take the health benefits, so I actually pay, have to pay my husband's company a fine of $100 a month because I choose not to take them. But the benefits package total for the mayor is like $80,000 a year. We need to take the full compensation and benefits package into consideration before we have the conversation about what the salary is. It needs to be the whole picture and not just the $21,012 and the 43,000, I don't even know what I make, 43,631. And if I have to vote no on the budget tonight, I will for the first time ever because this resolution was put in with 24 hours' notice, and we weren't given an opportunity to discuss and look at all of the other options and compensation along with it. This is a much bigger discussion than two pages added to the end of our budget, in my opinion. And it is not transparent to our community that for the past two and a half years, we've been hearing transparency is the number one thing that everybody wants to hear, and I'm not seeing that here. Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you for your comment. I am open to having this discussion, but I, I don't like how this was brought about sitting down here at the desk, having a resolution that had blank spaces, which were just filled in when Councilmember Torgason read those numbers. It's very, it doesn't give us enough time to look at options or consider other items. So Councilmember Torgason, could you explain how those numbers came about that you presented today, tonight?
Most certainly, because I had been, there was a consensus to try and understand what councils across the valley had been making, and someone had convinced someone on staff that there wasn't a consensus. I'd been pushing for numbers for months. After one of our last retreats, most certainly, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Bon Giovanni distinctly remember asking for this, never got it. So what I had done is I had finally gotten with someone on staff, we found what the, the most comparable communities, the three above us and three below us, and took averages. And then we also looked at the lowest paid full-time staff member who has those same benefits that we do. And we looked at it, those numbers were very similar, but in thinking about it, it would be better since Phoenix and Goodyear and all these, these places are looking at increases this year, and some of them are asking for very substantial ones. Rather than leave it to every two years to adjust, which we do for salaries all the time by benchmarking, to tie it to the lowest paid employee in the town, rather than make it a true career position, you make, you tie it to the lowest, but it allows the pool of possible candidates to open up. Too many candidates, when they realize the time to put in to do it right is not 10 hours a week. It's not, as several of you have said, that you watched in the past, people not even read their packets. Some of them would read it on the dais, they put so little time in. And we need to make sure we have people that will dedicate time that don't have either wealth, their own business, or a spouse willing to help. We need those people to be able to run and not be so elitist in the way we're handling it. This will certainly work most, most against me of everyone here, since I will be the one to take the bullet. I am asking to do something that widens the pool of people. If I ran, they would be running against me. I'm actually inviting competition by doing this. I am opening this up so the average person in Gilbert can consider doing this without completely harming their home. You have a median salary of $104,000 a year. It's not like we're trying to be career people and say, give us 104 a year, but to tie us to the lowest seems much more prudent than tying it, tying us to people such as in Tucson. They tried to get $144,000 a year for council. That was insane. There's no service in that, that's, that's, that's a career. But to open the pool where people, and we've all heard it, I can't afford to do it. And Kathy, to what you said, well, you waited till you were retired. You're retired, or you're rich, or someone's paying your way. That's not fair. Mayor, you said if it wasn't for a gracious husband, who's oddly, he's a smart breadwinner, and he does very well, you couldn't afford a one-bedroom apartment in this town. That isn't the message we need to be sending to candidates. It's not the message for anyone to hear. And when we look at this, and if we look at it in a year as what the benchmark is, the benchmark's going to be much higher than it is today. To tie it to the lowest paid employee is absolutely the most prudent way to do this. I will be the most crucified of all of us over this. There's no chance I won't be crucified for this. There's plenty of service. I don't want to get into the dollars I lose, it's not my point. I did agree to a salary. I looked at it, and of course, as we said in retreats, no one told you the time to do it right, and the people that were sitting there that wanted to knock this down and do it for free, as you said, were people that weren't even reading the packets, or they were in support. They had businesses supporting them, doing the work during the day, the first half of their day, one of them told me, free lunch, they did all their council work, and then they actually worked their job from 1 to 5. That isn't what we should, relying on. We need people, an electrician that can take off, do 20 hours at night and take off 20 in the day and not go bankrupt doing it. And that's quite, the numbers, we look at this from, you know, we're in our 50s or 60s, and we're thinking, wow, these are huge numbers. They're not. Our lowest paid staff member is, is that number, that 53,28888 a month. That's our lowest paid staff member. These aren't tremendously large numbers. They're large numbers in context, when you're thinking, I worked for $2.15 an hour in 1979, because I did. We're looking at these things through the wrong lens. We're looking to look through this as, how do we get more people to run, better people to run, more engaged people to run, more diverse people to run? And it is the only way can we do it, and we not, we need not to be high enough to be an incentive to run, but it can't be so low that it is a disincentive to run. And we hear too many candidates and people we've talked to that are interested in running, they look at the actual responsibilities, it's not worth it to them.
Councilmember Torgason, thanks for your comments. I think you have some good points, but I'm not comfortable making a vote on this exact piece of paper at this moment or having this full discussion. You have tied it in with the budget. The budget can't be raised at this point, so this would have to come out of contingency funds.
Correct.
I would propose that we table the full discussion and conversation about the resolution to a meeting later this year and have a vote no later than November on a final resolution after we've had time to digest, look at data, pull information, and look at a couple of different options, as Councilmember Tilke suggested, more of a CPI versus, as you proposed, tying it to the lowest paid full-time employee. I believe the mayor in, in this position will always work full-time. It is a lot of hours that that position has to spend. I don't agree that a council member, they can work full-time, but there are some that haven't and don't. I believe this entire council works their butt off and spends a lot of time on all of our issues, so I'm not talking about anyone on this dais, but there's a risk that in the future, there could be someone put in, elected to office, that wouldn't spend as much time, and that would be wasteful as well. So I, I want to have more information and a more robust conversation, but not at tonight's meeting. Are you comfortable with tabling this to a future meeting, knowing that we can still use contingency funds in the budget if we approve it tonight?
No, because it's been tanked and worked around so many times, and there's been so much misinformation passed through that I want to proceed with it now. Today is the day I want to do this. Chuck, you look like you want to say something.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Vice Mayor is before me if you want to speak first.
No, I was just going to tell the mayor that I do have a communication from citizen on this item.
No, I was just going to tell the mayor that I do have a communication from citizen on this item. I don't know if you want to hear from him, if he's, they're here.
This is a special meeting, I'm assuming it works like public meeting, that we can take comments. I didn't get that card, so I didn't know that it's on this topic.
Yeah, it's on this topic.
Yeah, if we would like to invite the public down.
Mayor Peterson, just real quick, it sounds like the card was filled out incorrectly, but we do have a pending motion. Just as a reminder, there's a pending motion before the council. I think the council needs to do something with that pending motion, and then you can resume that conversation.
But the problem with doing something with the pending motion is it's our budget. Because somebody jumped in and made a motion on the budget, including these two pages, that some of us just don't want to move forward. And so I struggle with what to do with that. I, I don't agree that we should have had this resolution at the end of the budget discussion, and I, I think this has put us in a really difficult position. And not voting on it tonight is not going to change anything. Nothing can go into effect until at least January of 2025. It's still going to have to use contingency funds, no matter what, because you can't increase tonight's budget, because we already had the preliminary budget vote. So not voting on these two pages tonight will not change anything until January, at the soonest. And so I agree with Councilmember Kaprowski.
I move to amend the motion to remove the resolution from item eight, with the motion being to approve the budget as it stands alone. And I would need a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Tilke, to move and approve item number eight, budget removing the resolution. Please vote. You can cancel, can't you? Can you cancel?
Is it too late for me to have my opinion on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, he didn't even get to speak.
He didn't get to speak because, well, because we have a speaker, and we wanted to move forward with the budget vote and not the resolution.
Can you clear that before we do voting?
Thank you.
Can we clarify what we're voting on then?
I just did, I'm sorry, I just did. That would be just on the budget, approving the budget, removing the resolution from the budget vote, would just be the budget itself as presented.
So would we have a discussion on the resolution at all?
We can discuss that, and we have somebody that would like to speak on it too, so that's why we were pulling it out separately. This is.
Mayor, if I can, can jump in. So there was the pending motion, was approval of the budget with the resolution. Councilmember Kaprowski moved to amend, there was a second. So what the council's voting on is to amend the original motion to take out the resolution. So the only motion that would be pending, if this one were to pass, would be approval of the budget. So you vote here, if this passes, then you would have to vote again to vote on the amended motion, which would be approval of the budget without the resolution.
Do we have to vote again to have discussion on it?
I think the mayor, you can still have that discussion on the resolution, because this item's still out there.
So we have to do two?
Correct.
The first one on the amendment that Councilmember Kaprowski just made, which is to remove the resolution from the motion of the budget.
And then you would vote again on the amended original motion, or the original motion as amended by this, this amended.
Thank you. I hate amendments. So this motion would be to remove the resolution from the original motion that was to vote for the budget. So we're just voting on removing the resolution from the motion. Please vote. That was a motion and a second already. That's a 5-2 vote, passes to remove the resolution from the motion that was originally stated. So we have a motion on the floor to pass the budget. Would anyone like to comment just on the budget motion that was made? I forgot who made the motion on the budget. Oh, the original motion was Councilmember Torgason, right.
But his, his motion is with the resolution, but that's gone now.
That's gone now.
So now it's just on the motion.
Correct, you would be voting right now on the amended motion, which was just approved.
Which is the passing of the budget.
Just the passing of the budget.
I think we're just voting, because we already have a motion and a second. We just need to vote, Chevelli.
You need to vote again, that's correct.
Please, can you clear the?
Again, voting on the amended motion, which is passage of the budget only.
Which is a motion to approve the budget. Please vote. The budget passes 6-1. Now, we can go back to a discussion on the two-page resolution, which, again, I don't know how we discussed when it wasn't actually on our agenda for the public. But Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Anderson, would you like to invite the person down that asked to speak on this item?
Certainly. Rod Suave? Is that the name? Don't see him here. He did write something on the back of this and asked it to be read if they had to leave, so I'll read it very quickly. He says, "Not sure why it has taken one and a half years to advance this discussion. Our elected members are grossly underpaid, and I believe it impacts the diversity of members. Having only retired or millionaires is not the true diversity of our town."
Did you know I was a millionaire or retired?
Yes, Councilmember Tilke.
Mayor, I think as many of us mentioned, and Councilwoman Bon Giovanni, I know you want to say something. I would, I, I, I think that this is worthy of having a conversation. That wasn't the concern I had. I think it was just not having an opportunity to look at this and look at the different options. I, I would like to give a date certain for us to have that conversation. It would help if we could do it in a study session first, so we can work it all out, so we're not doing it up here on the dais in the future. But I'm open to a suggestion on the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you. You know, I, I, I look at this, and yes, it is an honor to serve. But who can serve? I mean, let's take a look at the current council. We have the rich, the retired, and I represent the beautiful. I met seven years ago. I couldn't afford to be on this council. Seven years ago. Probably would have done a good job seven years ago, but I couldn't afford to run. And that shouldn't stop someone from wanting to run for office. If I decide not to run in two years, I want to be replaced by a schoolteacher. I want to be replaced by a single mom. I don't want someone not to be able to run because they can't afford to get a babysitter. The only thing that guarantees us from being up here is having to pay so low that no one else can afford, the average citizen couldn't afford to be here. In the last year and a half, I met some incredible citizens, and many of them are sitting in this room right now. And it would be an honor to sit with them on this council, but they can't run. It cost me $35,000 to run for this seat. If I run again, maybe it'll cost me $45,000 to run for this seat. And I don't want to shut out people just because they, they can't afford to run. This isn't about us. A pay raise is not going to affect my life at all. But it's about the guy who sits here or the girl who sits in my seat when I leave, so we can have a better representative of, of the community. What's our age, 34 years, something like that? There's a young guy running for Chandler. I love it. I think that's great that he's really young and he's running for Chandler. Hats off to him, and gosh, I hope he wins. But we can't do that here. We can't do it here because if you're a brand-new person, now, I know I ran as a complete nobody, but I had the finances to run. A complete nobody can't really do that right now, because they can't get funded by developers or anyone else to help them in their campaign. We're missing out on a lot of good potential candidates. When we ran for our four seats here, we had 10 people running against, 10 people in total running, 10. Who won? Those of us who own businesses won. Those who didn't, who, those who didn't win, they were working for other people. They couldn't afford to take a job. We had, we had a, it was a two-day financial retreat. And by the way, in that financial retreat, we did talk about this, so we cannot say that this was thrown at the last second. It was talked about. Four of us said we want to have discussions on it, and somehow it got buried. Mayor, I'm speaking right now, please. Asking for more cost for us for training. Some of us want to be better. Some of us want to go to these conferences, not to sit and drink, but to learn from other council people, to learn from other mayors, to learn from other state representatives. We want to be better at our jobs. I'm sorry if other councils didn't want to do that. I'm sorry if other councils didn't want to open up their packet. They sat down here. That's not my problem. I'm committed to this, just like everyone up here is, and I'm proud of everyone up here for the time that we commit for this job, because it's a job. It's an honor to serve, but the honor shouldn't just be for the elite. I'm able to come up here now because I sold my company to private equity. I could afford to be a nobody, throw money in, and, and tell people how I felt about things to win this seat. But I can tell you that four out of five people sitting here right now that would do an incredible job can't do that. They can't. There's no way they can do that. It's not fair. It's not, to me, it's, it's not democracy, you know? And if you want to keep the elite up here, then keep us at $21,000, because no one else can, can sit up here. I'm pretty passionate about this, because this wasn't transparent, I mean, this was transparent. It just got buried. It got buried. Somehow the story went to, we had, we didn't have four of us saying that we wanted to talk about this. Four of us wanted to talk about this. And we couldn't bring it up until this last second here. It's an honor to be up here, and, you know, the amount of pay isn't going to keep me up here or not keep me up here. It's not me, it's not about me. And I don't believe it's about anyone sitting up here, but it's about those who follow us. Because we have a responsibility for the people who follow us, and we have a responsibility for the people in this town to have the best candidates up here. And that means paying the position so they can afford to take days off, they can afford to miss vacations, they can afford to hire a babysitter to come to a meeting. Because, folks, I'm telling you, there's a lot of meetings. And if I didn't own a very well-off company, I couldn't be sitting up here, because I couldn't afford to come to those meetings. Now, you can get by and not go to those meetings. You can do it. I've seen it done before. You wouldn't be a really good council member, but you can get by. And I don't think that this town deserves us to just to get by. I think this town deserves us to all do our very best. And I guess Forrest Gump, that's all I'm going to say about that.
I don't know who is next. Council, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm one of the, the signatures on that piece of paper you all received, and I still do feel strongly in the resolution. I'm patient enough to know that we need to, may need to discuss it some more, but I want that to happen sooner rather than later. I agree with Councilmember Bon Giovanni that this has been around for a while. And I'm willing to discuss the, the things that Councilmember Tilke or Councilmember Kaprowski have talked about. I think that's important that we air that out and we talk about it. But again, I'll reiterate, sooner rather than later, I'm willing to be patient with that. I agree with what's been mentioned by the council members that right now, the pool of candidates for council are either the independently wealthy, the independent business owners, and I'm affectionately referred to in the social media as the Crip keeper. So I guess Crip keepers are part of the group too, the, those who are retired. That's who serves, for the most part, on the council. We need to get to the point where there are others who will, as Councilmember Bon Giovanni said, that they're willing to put their names in for consideration as our, has always been the, the purpose of representative democracy is to have everybody represented. And I want to see that we in Gilbert are making that available to those who want to do this. So I am willing, that's why I voted, and we can't work without a budget. We have to have a budget, so we need to have that budget. But thi- this needs to be discussed sooner rather than later. And I'd say whatever we want to date certain, make it soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgason, will you next, or did you leave your mic on?
I don't know if I was next, I'm, I don't have to be next.
Go ahead.
The last two mayors left this position for better-paying positions, John Lewis and Jen Daniels. Several council people left years ago to run, or one was appointed to, to assess her, took the job, and as he admitted to me, yes, overpay. Another one became the justice of the peace, left early because he saw an opening for the pay. And of course, you left to be, to be mayor. To watch, to realize that you see people that you think would be great that just can't do that. And as we sit up here, the youngest of us being young, the rest of us in our mid-late 50s on up, businessmen, retired people. This isn't a, it's not a cross-section of this town. When you compare it and you benchmark it to any other community, it is woefully inadequate. It's disrespectful, and I think that that's picked up by a lot of people. They look at, some people look at you like, you're an idiot to serve. Why would you put up with that? I want people that want to be that idiot. I want people to go, okay, it's enough for me to give up my, a little bit of my freedom, my time, my money, I, I, maybe I'm not whole, but I'm not cut in half. Certainly, nobody's going to make Elon Musk whole if he provides 30, 40, or 50 hours a week. But when we're talking, you couldn't get, the average server couldn't afford to take the time off to do this. And when, you know, if you were to approach the mayor as a full-time position without a spouse supporting you, you couldn't live in Gilbert. That's not an appropriate number, and it doesn't speak well of the office. And it does need to be handled. I'm sorry, it had to come to a point where I interjected this as forcefully as I did, but I didn't appreciate how things kept getting turned when four people, and there was a consensus to discuss this, and then they were, someone in staff was dissuaded from that. And the things behind the scenes and the lack of discussion, and we've talked about this before, and it's not gone anywhere, we have to talk about it now. And it needs to be handled. The, we have four people running for council seats. I don't know if there are, there's two of them that you're absolute favorites and you're happy to. I would like to have seen 10. But I know that the people that could do it, I'm concerned about one of them not having the time, because they don't own their business. I know a couple of them are retired. So I don't know how we're progressing and making sure that we're representing people. The town is having proper representation. When we continue to kick this can down, and I, for one, was willing to take the bullet, because I am going to be seen as the bad guy. And I'm more than willing to take that bullet. But sooner or later, it has to be dealt with. Not everyone can afford to serve, but nobody's talking about career money here. Nobody up here is looking to make this a career and serve on council for 30 years. And some, in the past, certainly, they served a long time. Some people, 14, 16 years. Some people, 14, 16 years. They had a retirement program for them, state retirement program. That's not something that we have anymore, thank God. But we have to address this, and I, we can't talk about it individually, because we've, I've talked to Chuck, I've talked to Scott, now I can't talk to anybody else. So to say we're kicking it down the curb to talk about it. Where? Where's that going to make a difference? That's my, where does that make a difference? We're in public, as transparent as possible. We've called everything out. Where can we be more transparent? Behind the scenes and breaking open meeting law? Is that what we're going to do now?
I'm sorry, are you finished?
For now.
Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wrap this conversation up with direction to bring this topic back in a study session format the last meeting in August.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Point of order. Councilmember Buckley. I don't know, I don't think you can see her mic from there.
I'm sorry, I was just going to interrupt Councilmember, Councilmember Tilke, and let her know that Councilmember Buckley would like to speak, and she hasn't said anything yet, so.
Oh, did you call me? I thought you called me.
I did call you.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, but I didn't know you were going to move right into a recommendation. I thought you were going to comment, and so I wanted to give Councilmember Buckley the opportunity to speak.
All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley.
Okay. I, I haven't, I did not see the resolution or anything, but I, I agree with Scott in that, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of at a loss for words on this, on this whole thing, but I, I do agree with Jim, I agree with Chuck, and I also, I'm in agreement with Scott and Young that perhaps this should be done at a different time and place. And do we do that as a study session again? And is that going to be necessary again to go through all this, is my thought there?
We, we did have a study session on this topic, all of the items that were around mayor and council for costs and everything at one study session. And I think Councilmember Tilke had recommended bringing it back to, or Councilmember Kaprowski, I can't remember. One of them said, bring it back to a study session, because we've been handed numbers tonight, or read numbers tonight that we had no idea about. And I think a couple of us have mentioned compensation, so what does that look like together? And do we want to sit here at the dais and do that? Probably not. It's better to do it at a study session so that we can come to a consensus for a full, filled-out resolution to come to us to vote for on this dais during a regular meeting.
Right. Well, I have another, is Rob here? Is, is, is he here that he could give the presentation where, where these numbers came from and?
But do we want to get into that much detail tonight if we're going to just move this forward? Because I think we're, we've discussed it to the point where some of us are to the point of just moving it forward. I don't, I don't think, I did not appreciate the process that it went through, and I would like to move this forward to a future date so that we can bring it back. And I'm fine, I've always been fine with having the conversation. I've been waiting for the conversation. I had slides with the clerk's office last meeting, thinking we were going to have this conversation, but it never came up. And so I'm fine with having the conversation. It doesn't have to be tonight if it's going to come out of contingency, any to affect till January. So we're not in a rush to pass this. It can be passed at any time between now and December, and still goes into effect in January, or the future that Councilmember Tilke was discussing, just laying it all out there.
So, well, I, I think for transparency, since we're this far into this, that if Rob could go ahead, so we all have that information, and, and let us know, you know, all the research you've done on this and where these numbers come from and how you came about them.
I think Rob emailed all of that information to us tonight, too.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, you did receive an email with that information tonight, so the vast majority of the information that was in that email was from the November retreat when, when we discussed. There was a presentation that covered, like, several different areas, I guess council-related areas, and one of those was a discussion about, about salaries. So, so it's really just information we collected from the region, and then did kind of average that out based on, you know, what the, what collectively the average among the cities looks like, and how that compares to, to Gilbert mayor and council salaries.
Okay, so, so those numbers that Councilmember Torgerson gave earlier, did they come from that information that you had?
Yeah, the one thing, we also included top seven population cities in Arizona, and what that average looked like would be the one thing that was added with, with the most recent numbers that, that he shared.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
No, I apologize. Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want everybody on this dais to know that I understand the passion. I understand the reasoning for why you're wanting to bring this forward. I can only personally apologize if there was a thought that this was coming forward in a different format at a different time. I wasn't aware of that, so I wasn't involved in squelching this by any means. But just, I think, I, I hope that we can find a way within open meeting laws to have conversations when we feel something's not coming forward when it should be coming forward. I hope we can find that way so that we're not surprised in the future. I think that's what I am hopeful for. This is an important topic. Everything that you all have talked about, the reasonings why, all of that is very, very important. I, I would just like time to have a, a conversation where we have all that information in front of us. So I'm asking for, because I don't think I can make a motion on this. I think it will just be direction to staff that we bring back all of the, this resolution with backup documentation and maybe reach out to us for other options that we would be thinking about to come forward in a study session the last meeting in August, which would allow us to vote in September on a resolution. And I think when you're looking at timing for people to consider running in the next election, that gives them plenty of time to know what, what would be happening or not. So I'd like to kind of move this on if that's agreeable.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Kaprowski.
I, I, thank you, Councilmember Tilke. I just wanted to add that as direction to staff, information that I'd like to see in that further discussion is one or two more options on how the salary would change over time. Currently, it's benchmarked to the lowest-paid full-time salaried employee of the town, and I'd like to see a couple other options. I think that would give me enough information and data, along with the information already provided, to have that discussion.
Mayor, if I may, to include the CPI and what that index would do to salaries if that was included, that would be helpful.
Also, full compensation. I want to see benefits, full compensation, that includes retirement, insurance, anything that would be considered, your full benefits. If we go to our own Total Rewards page, or whatever it's called on the system, it shows us a full outline of what our benefits are, and we're not talking about those. And I really think that it's important to pull it all together so that we see what we're talking about in full. And as far as elections go, this isn't going to affect the people that are running this year. Councilmember Tilke just mentioned it'll, it'll potentially affect people in the future running, but politics and elections have changed so much over the past four, six, eight years. When I ran for council the first time, it cost me $7,000. And then the second time I ran, it was $10,000. When I ran for mayor in 2020, it was $63,000, and the other two people that ran spent $106,000 and $125,000. You see a difference in running for office today than you saw years ago. And to run, well, you probably have to have a couple of screws loose, first of all, because it's not the easiest thing to do. And I say that with all affection for everybody sitting up here. But I have seen all kinds of different people serve on this dais as council members. Private business people, young people, stay-at-home moms, single women, people that worked for their own businesses, people that worked for family businesses, people that worked for big businesses. It's been, it has run the gamut over the years, and it, I have not seen it have an effect on the people that have run here like is being, is being discussed. I've had one person say to me over the past year that they didn't think they could afford to, to run for council because the pay was so low. But that's not rampant. It's not what I'm hearing over and over again. Come, Vice Mayor Anderson, you have your mic on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I, I realize that we can't do anything later this month, and we don't meet in July, but I'd like the first meeting in August. I want this sooner rather than later.
I was going to, I was going to say two weeks. I was going to say June 18th, but I don't know.
I'm fine with June 18th.
We have all the slides and all of the information. I just didn't, I didn't like not having the information to sit here and look at and digest between last night and tonight, and I don't think we have all of the information. I think it needs more. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Yeah, I'd like to, for staff, include the, um, since Councilmember Torgerson wanted to link it to the lowest-paid full-time employee, I'd like to see their compensation, also healthcare and all that kind of stuff, same as the mayor's request for us, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Buckley?
I, I just wanted to mention that even though there, there is additional package and benefit, not all of us take those and use those. I, I don't take, you know, I don't use the insurance. They, they do have retirement that we can, you know, that we contribute to, but not everybody uses all of the benefits that are available, and I just wanted to bring that up.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Yeah, the intent with the tying it to the lowest-paid employee is that that number generally will receive some sort of CPI, some sort of cost-of-living adjustment, but it's, it should never go rampant, whereas I've seen, like I said, I saw Tucson trying to give themselves $144,000 a year, which is just such a huge amount of money that it is, it's an attraction. It's crazy money. And I wanted to keep it humble, and I thought attaching ourselves to the lowest-paid employee was much more humble than what will happen. And from what Patrick, and if he wishes to chime in, said, he had heard some communities talking about very large increases that are being proposed with their councils. I didn't want this to go rampant. I wanted to keep it in a much more humble, low-key place that it's not, it's not going to be affected by large fluctuations of people that may self-serve, that may feel that $144,000 is, is appropriate, which I find completely inappropriate. And I didn't want to be subject to that in that sense. I thought the humility of saying I am the lowest-paid salaried person here was much more effective and made more sense, especially since that person can't probably afford to live in Gilbert either. And Patrick, is there anything that you can say about what you had heard in that meeting?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, yes. City manager Jeff Barton of Phoenix mentioned that Phoenix will be bringing something to the ballot this fall as they're required by charter to their voters. I'm going to phone a friend and ask Rob Boer if he has those actual numbers. I've got a general bark, bark idea, but I want to make sure we're accurate on that and correct.
So, Mayor and Council, yeah, the city of Phoenix has a, a citizen commission that makes recommendations about council, mayor and council salary increases. And I know the percentage, but I'll have to find the actual number, but I know it was equated to an 18% increase for mayor and a 25% increase for council. So if you give me just one second, I apologize. So the numbers ended up being, so the current mayor's salary, I believe, is $88,000, and that would go up to $103,840. And the current council salary is $61,600, and that would go up to $77,000 if approved.
Thanks, Rob. Phoenix is the fifth-largest city in the country, right?
Mayor, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, the largest city in the state of Arizona and the fifth-largest in the country, I believe. And I was shocked to know that the mayor only made $88,000 for that city. The, the council members' districts are the size of Gilbertan population, I believe, or close to. So each district is about the size of the town of Gilbert.
They win their elections with under 10,000 votes.
And that's really sad. But I just wanted to say, because I don't want Tom Blodgett to put in the paper that I am rich or retired, because I am neither rich nor retired, and I don't want my husband getting wind that I'm retired, because I have not retired yet, and I don't have a sugar daddy either. And I know that that was brought up today, too. And the, the reason that I use mayor's pay, wouldn't be able to afford to pay the rent in the town of Gilbert, is because we so often hear from our residents that every apartment unit in Gilbert is Section 8, and the rent in Gilbert is not affordable. If the mayor's salary of $43,000 isn't enough to afford an apartment in Gilbert, that's the only reason that I use that. You need to make probably $48,000 to $50,000 to rent an apartment in Gilbert right now. But that's why I use that comparison, not saying that it's because this job doesn't pay enough, but because we hear so often that every apartment is Section 8, and that's just not the case. So we will be moving this on to June 18th to come back, date certain, continued. Vice Mayor, did you have something else?
No, I was just going to try and get us to that point.
Thank you.
Let's go to June 18.
June 18th, follow-up, thank you. We will adjourn the special meeting and reconvene our regular meeting. Moving to our consent calendar, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, we don't have any requests to pull anything, so I would move that we approve items nine through 31 on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, real quick, before you vote, I apologize. So you want it on for a June 18th study session for further discussion? Do you want anything agendized for the June 18th council meeting?
So I would do both. I would put it on the study session and agendize it to the meeting, because we've talked about it at length this evening, and then that night, we could firm everything up and potentially vote on it that night.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick, for the clarification.
My email must not have got through. I do want to have a quick discussion on 26.
26.
Oh, sorry, consent.
So approve items nine through 31 with the exception of item 26.
Can I get a second to approve items nine? Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Uh-oh.
I can go ahead and redo it really quick.
Please re-vote. That fingered that one, maybe? Motion passes 7-0, so item 26.
26.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, um, our-
I saw somebody walking down. I thought you was just going to-
No, sorry, our town attorney, Chris Payne, had to leave, so Elena Jorkes is joining us as town attorney from this point forward tonight.
Okay, so I should have, I suppose, asked, in, in number 26 with the HSIP, I wanted to see a couple things. A, how that relates back to the federal government because of the state's requirements for reporting that. And the other part would be if it is, have we really considered how prudent it is to narrow that turn lane at Higley and Guadalupe when it, it might not be helping the final situation? Does any, can anybody give me information on that?
Can't see that far, and it's so dark over there. Oh, I still can't see. My glasses are filthy. Sorry. Oh, it's Yo. Hi, Yo. Turning the mic on. There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We have Aaron Pinkerton online. He's able to speak on those two questions regarding item number 26. So, give me a second and then see if he can kind of log in. Okay, he's at home right now. with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, or evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, Aaron, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I almost turned in person. I was like, well, did you expect the question tonight? Sorry about that. So to clarify the question, so there was two questions. One of them was how this pertains to the federal guidelines. With this being, HSIP is administered by ADOT, and so ADOT would handle all the, make sure we're in alignment with the federal requirements and guidelines. I'm not sure if that's, if there's something different in particular you're wondering about that, Councilmember Torgerson? Would you like to clarify your question?
Yeah, I was wondering if it tied us into any other federal programs regarding traffic, safety, that kind of thing. Was there anything else that we'd be responsible for back to the federal government by not performing what they consider properly on our end of that deal?
No. The way it works is during the application process, we show that the, the purpose of the project is adhering to certain safety improvements and is, through a competitive process based off the, the different safety, this is the safety improvements and the impact of those improvements. Therefore, adhering to those requirements, that, the broad requirement of improving safety, we could dive into the actual description of the HSIP, but in, to summarize it, it's for the overall improvement of safety in adherence to the, I'm trying to blank the document that ADOT references, but then this is the safety, safety purposes.
All right, and you're sure this does not tie back to other federal programs, like Safe Streets for All, that kind of thing?
This is not a tie, no. This is a standalone, it's a federal, the HSIP is a federal grant thing that each state has their own funding to administer locally. So this is the Arizona HSIP. So they manage it by themselves. It's not tied back to any other larger federal grants far as the requirements. It's a standalone.
Okay, I appreciate that. And do you have information on, as I believe we're altering some turn lanes, is that correct?
Um, I'm trying to remember. So, the turn lanes are ones that it's, it's improvements as per the direction in the, the project themselves, in the two CIP projects. And those turn lanes, it's based off of safety analysis and traffic volumes we've looked at. I believe the one you're referring to, it's going to a dual-left scenario-
Mm-hmm.
-based on the traffic, existing traffic volumes.
All right, and that, and you don't feel the narrowing of the, the turn lanes is, you think it's acceptable at the, the speed and the, and the, the use of that area, the actual traffic use? It's not, we're not pushing our luck? Sorry, I'm looking up at a blank screen.
You're saying narrowing the turn lanes.
Well, aren't we narrowing the turn lanes by a foot, I think?
Are we narrowing the turn lane, or are we narrowing the median in the turn lane?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not totally certain.
Aaron, Aaron, is it the situation where we're narrowing the median in the turn lane to that new system that we're using?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so there's, I guess there's, there's a couple different projects. And so, sure, going off the top of my mind, we're adding a right turn lane, and we are modifying the left turns so we have a more positive offset. That way, when you're, you can see past the oncoming left vehicle.
Okay, that, I think I understand now. I just wanted to clarify that, because it didn't come across as completely clear to me initially. I appreciate your time.
No, we're not, we're not changing, if we, yeah. We wouldn't be changing the, the width of the lanes unless we were adding additional lane. And in that case, still, we adhere to our standard draw, our standard details for lane widths.
Got it. All right, I appreciate your time, sir.
Certainly.
Councilman Torgerson, just to clarify, that your first point of, of grants, typically the grants are specific for whether it's air quality or safety. It doesn't then affect other grants or other larger federal projects. So it's very specific as far as what we need to do, as far as, if it's a safety issue, then it gets vetted out through ADOT and MAG as far as the safety aspects of it. And then the second part is that if you look at a lot of our intersection that are in the north part of the, of our town-
Correct.
-it, it was designed earlier, so a lot of times our design criteria has changed over time. And based on volume, there is offset issues where if you look at straight ahead, there's other traffic across you making a left turn that you can't see the other one. So that's why we're phasing a lot of these intersection improvement using HSIP funds.
Understood. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept item 26, the grant as written for resolution number 4483.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
My second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. That concludes, thank you, Aaron, concludes our consent agenda. Moving on to our administrative items, we have a boards and commissions discussion that we need to have. And actually, I'm going to request that we recess the council meeting and take us up into an exec session. We don't need staff, because this is a board and commission issue that we just need to go up and discuss. I'm looking right at our staff and attorneys. So I'd like to recess our meeting while we go up into exec session.
I'll go ahead and bring this meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is item number thirty-two, Boards and Commissions. Consider appointment to the Community Engagement Task Force. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following members to the Community Engagement Task Force focusing on teen violence. Their terms will begin June fourth, 2024, and ending after advising is completed on the assigned projects and issues if no other tasks are assigned by the council. The task force members' names: Natasha Ash, Mark Beasley, Justin Fink, Deana LaBio, Lisa Hatlin — sorry, Lisa, I can't say your middle — yeah, Angela Rogers, Katie Walter, Kelly Westerberg, Brandon Bradman is at our teen, Owen Formoil is our teen, and Max Udall is our teen reps. And Courtney Salmon and Nika Aguama are our alternate members, along with Andrew Lewis and Isabel Bryce as our Mayak alternate members.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as information only, we have worked with various members of our community and had advisory members to the Teen Violence Task Force. Representing Gilbert Public Schools is Susan Godina, Higley Unified School District, James Walker, Chandler Unified School District, Mark Huish, Santan Charter, Shane Stuckey, American Leadership Academy, Dan Provance, Gilbert Christian School, Holly Garza. From our Police Department, Levi Leba. And from Mayak is Andrew Lewis and Isabel Bryce. You'll notice that in their role, they will serve as alternates if some of our teens don't attend. So I wanted to make sure you had the information of the entire task force and our advisory members. Our first meeting will be on June tenth. And to begin, we have to go through all the rules and regulations of serving on a task force, and so that'll be the majority of that meeting. And bringing, introducing everybody, we'll start our work in August. As a reminder, we've started to put some of our agenda items together. It is our intent to come back monthly, so if we could make sure that that's an item on the agenda for me to give a report out, or if you feel it's best just to do that during council reports, just tell me which way you want to do that. Just to give the public an update on the different types of things that we're doing. Also, a reminder to our council liaisons for our school districts, we have you slated for September sixteenth to come in and talk about how those conversations are going. Just as a reminder for you and the public, because it's been a long time since we had that conversation. I know that you meet individually with the school districts, but hoping that maybe you could pull a meeting all together with the three of you in the three districts to talk about how we can expand our role together and how we can meet on a regular basis so that as issues come up, we can get ahead of those. And that's kind of the premise for that meeting, and if there's anything that comes out of that to present to our task force to consider. So, Patrick, I'm gonna ask if your staff could work with me and get information out to the council liaison so they know exactly what we're, you know, asking them to do and giving the date to September sixteenth. So happy to work with you on that. Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited. If I could just say that this was a very hard decision to get down to the number of people that we appointed based on the numbers that we had put out there. I continue to be amazed, especially as we look at community issues and we ask our residents to come forward. The caliber of people in this community, the expertise that they can bring in so many different levels of things that are going on, but their willingness to help. And I am just so thankful for everybody who stepped up, and hopefully others will want to continue to be involved. I'm happy that we are moving very quickly, I think faster than any other city, I'm not sure, but I, it is our intent to take this very seriously and to bring good feedback back to the council. Thank you.
So I'm gonna make the recommendation that we add Community Engagement Task Force to every agenda under administrative items like we did with the subcommittee, just because that gives us the opportunity to actually to discuss what's going with the Community Engagement Task Force. If we leave it to the end when Councilmember Tilke does her report out, then all you can do is report out. And so this way, it'll leave it open for us to actually ask you questions, offer feedback, anything that might come up. Did you get, thank you, Chevelli, I see a head nod over there. Thank you, Chevelli, for that. And I, yeah, I just want to reiterate the, when you're looking at two nights of interviews, we were here, what, four-thirty to seven-thirty, two nights in a row, and I'm so sorry because you were ill, but, so you had to be virtual, I'm sorry, I hope you don't mind me mentioning that, but I know that makes it harder on you when you're virtual, but when you're looking at two nights of interviews for three hours of eleven or twelve or thirteen people each night, it, it's daunting, right? I think, at best, when you think about having to come and sit and interview every fifteen minutes a new person, but I really enjoyed it. The people that we got to meet and the people that we got to talk to, and you're right, the caliber of people, and I would say, our teens were the best. They were, weren't they not amazing young men? And just to have that opportunity to sit and talk to those people for those fifteen minutes, each person was just, really just a pleasure. So, thank you to everybody that applied, and, you know, we can't take everyone, unfortunately, but we got it down to a really great group. Moving on to item, did anybody have any other comments? Thank you. Moving on to item thirty-three, Council Administration, Considered Option of Resolution Number four-four-eight-four Designating the Chief Fiscal Officer to Submit the FY-2024-2025 Expenditure Limit Report. Does anybody need a presentation or discussion on this? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number four-four-eight-four?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Buckley.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes seven-zero. Moving on to item thirty-four, Policy Number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-three, Consider Approval of Revisions to Council Policy Number twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-three Regarding the Code of Conduct. Would anybody like a presentation on this? It was pretty straightforward. Any comments, questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item thirty-four. And for the public, it was just changing, and one item in there, instead of it being called Point of Privilege, it's called Point of Order. That's the only change that was made.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. One more. Passes seven-zero. Thank you. Moving on to Communications from Citizens. Vice Mayor, before I turn it over to you, I wanted to just make a statement about our parking garage safety enhancements. As always, we appreciate the continued feedback and participation of our community members in supporting Gilbert's safety and community livability. And I have an update regarding the safety efforts in Gilbert's garages in the Heritage District. As some of you may not know, Gilbert Heritage District receives approximately five-point-five million visits from an estimated one-point-six million visitors each year due to its robust offerings to families, teens, and adults. To effectively serve this dynamic population over the past several years, the Gilbert Police Department has deployed seven bike patrol officers and a sergeant assigned exclusively to patrol the Heritage District, supported by one to three patrol officers who patrol the beat, that includes the district. The town of Gilbert has already been in the process of completing an upgrade to the existing security cameras at the two Heritage District parking garages, and I know someone had spoken on these a few weeks ago, and we had them checked. No wires were cut, everything was safe, everything was working, but the upgrades that we have coming will improve the video quality from low resolution to high traffic resolution. We are able to report that the Hernway Garage upgrade is nearly complete, and the Ash Street Garage upgrade will be completed very shortly thereafter. It is important to note that the security cameras in both Heritage District parking garages are and have been operational. In response to increased youth-related activity in the downtown parking garages, the Gilbert Police Department developed an additional proactive detail of two additional patrol officers specifically assigned to the two garages between the hours of eight PM and two AM every Friday and Saturday. To effectively maintain this additional level of staffing, it was necessary to pull from existing patrol units in the area, which is not a sustainable long-term solution. Therefore, Gilbert staff has formed a working group to research and evaluate additional potential opportunities for further safety enhancements. Tonight, the council is able to share that staff is bringing forward at the June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four council meeting, an agenda item to implement additional onsite security at the garage during peak evening hours. This additional presence of private, uniformed security during peak evening hours will assist with ensuring the garages remain a safe place for all visitors to use. In addition, active monitoring of the downtown garage cameras will occur during the town's regular business hours. Again, we thank our community members for their input and engagement, and we will continue to evaluate any additional safety enhancements. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a Request to Speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The Communications from Citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify the town council, to the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them, and at the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking for your allotted time. Our first speaker tonight is Kristin Mandley.
Excuse me, ma'am. It would be this podium over here. Thank you. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Kristin Mandley, and I'm a resident in Morrison Ranch in Gilbert, Arizona. I am a business owner and a mom of two beautiful children, and I'm coming before the council today to state that, and say thank you for allowing me to take two minutes in speaking on behalf of the East Valley Moms Demand Action. I became involved with moms when a family member was shot in a school shooting, and now we live with the effects of gun violence in our family. With everything that's going on in our community, it's something that everything, everybody should be aware of. should be aware of and address the situation. All of June is Gun Violence Prevention Month and it should be at the top of everyone's agenda to prevent gun violence in our community as it is the number one cause of death of teens and children in America. I will re-part of a proclamation that was emailed to the council without a response and so I thought that it might be important to bring it to your attention with everything that's going on in our community. The proclamation declares that the first Friday of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town council in honor and remember, in remembrance of all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a town and a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded on an average of more than 44,341 gun deaths each year. Whereas Americans are 26 more times likely to die by gun violence and homicide than other people in high-income countries. And Arizona has 1,290 gun deaths every year with a rate of 7.2 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 15.9 billion each year, of which 232.2 million is paid by taxpayers and Arizona has the 18th highest rate of gun death in the U.S. Protecting public safety in communities that we serve should be the mayor's highest responsibility and gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and suicides, non-fatal shootings across the country. We would love to continue this conversation to protect our children so they can grow up in a safe community. Our community in Morrison Ranch is not safe. We witness every weekend what is going on and it's disturbing. And so I would like to know what the next steps would be and would love to meet with the board on a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Myers, who has donated his time to Bridget Vega.
The first comment will be read on behalf of Katie McPherson. However, I do want to share an audio clip from Gilbert Chamber.
... criticism that comes with the office, but the, I count, for instance, I'd say right now, what we've been doing, the subcommittee work on teen violence, I'd count that as success because we've been able to take a very rowdy crowd that has some serious issues and I have to hand it to them that they're very sincere about it, but I feel like they have come around now to the point that they feel like they've been listened to, they're not, and to me, that's success in the town. When I can talk to a constituent, they say they understand where we're coming from or they say...
So with that, Rowdy was a cheer I did in high school. Loved it. It's also what our vice mayor called concerned parents and citizens that came forward to address brutal attacks that split open schools, children using and dealing fentanyl and cocaine in our schools and community and holding an arsenal of weapons and ski masks on porches. What has transpired in our town is a deep-seated mental health crisis. Under all the rage and, under all the rage and violence, you have young men in deep crisis. As of today, Chief Solberg is unwilling to name the goons, only a group of violent young adults. It is as if it didn't even happen. Proximity matters and the continual lack of plans to mitigate risk and the lackadaisical approach to brutality to innocent young women and men signals a more serious kind of concern. It is being bystanders and bystanders allowing violence and bullying to flourish. It validates the behavior. Why are we not concerned about the root cause of all of this instead of blaming parents and taxpayers for being approximate, appropriately horrified? Young men with grievances, access to firearms, and escalating behavior continue to signal for help in the cities and towns nationwide. Yvaldi, Oxford, and Parkland, to name a few. I will once again sound the alarm. I am unwilling to whistle by the graveyard. I've done what I can as a mom to support our community. I wish you had too. And then this should roll over. I think mine goes next. Mayor and council, so if we can add the...
Three more minutes.
Mayor and council chief and Banger, you don't get to look the other way on this issue. Innocent children have died and been brutally assaulted on your watch. Two weeks ago, a child fell off the rooftop of Gilbert Garage and died, yet crickets. Because of town of Gilbert's approach, it made it clear that a 19-year-old was under the influence. So what, it's not your problem? Instead of saying condolences to the teenager's family, how did we get here? What safety measures do we have in place in this town? Mayor, Chuck, Banger, Solberg, when will people start being ticketed so you will see change versus just telling them to leave as the officers have continued to do so? We need you as leadership to step up, to be proactive, yet your leadership continues to perpetuate and inflict harm on the community by not taking a clear stand against teen violence. Chief, let's make this clear. A gang is a gang. Gilbert Goons is a gang that has inflicted harm across the East Valley and Gilbert, you have a gang problem. Do you not want to say Gilbert Goons are gang because it would affect the real estate, which it should never be profit over people? We demand accountability. This is our second community public request as the families have requested multiple times. Gilbert releases the records of Tristan Keener and Connor Jarnigan as they were both brutally assaulted by Gilbert Goons. Chief and gang, or the gang unit, we ask for press conferences to come back to discuss what your plans are for the summer, especially all the goons have been released. And there are so many more who continue to cause further vandalism and harm to the community, yet no one's been arrested or accountable, held accountable. As a community, we want canine unit, a canine dog to be added to surface the garages along with paid parking. As we personally spent five months downtown at the garages, we demand an external investigation as the public has a right to know that one of the internal affairs investigations were completed and not taken serious. As stated, there was no evidence of violation or policy or administrative law. The allegations were found that the complaint was closed. Mayor and council in chief, I find it disturbing as a mother and a community advocate that as a town, I've watched, you've watched countless videos and pictures of an officer back-to-back nights, same pattern engaged for legal purposes, what appeared based on my opinion and observation, to have a powwow with three alleged minors leaned in an officer's car taking selfies, questionable behavior for over 30 minutes at the rooftop and then went down to the alley behind culinary dropout after calling him out about education hour being over. Meanwhile, teenagers were loitering, smoking weed, and underage drinking openly. But that's also the same officer who told us that other calls had to be taken in his beat. We didn't know what he does. And then it doesn't stop there. He would get out of his vehicle just before curfew to say bye to them. We have a duty to protect the innocent and Gilbert, you have blood on your hands. To the youth, I'm sorry. We're here for you. You are enough. Your voice matters. We see you. We hear you. We stand by you. Please continue to keep the Lord family and all of the youth in your prayers. Rise up, Gilbert. And we printed all the pictures out for you.
Thank you. Next is Don Edwards and Crystal's donated her time to him, so he'll have six minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members. My name's Don Edwards and I was recently forced to retire from the fire department after being retaliated against for filing a complaint. I'm here tonight to continue my effort to shine a light on the people who are currently in charge of your fire department and the culture they have developed. Some things to keep in mind about the incident I'm going to talk about. This was in 2021 at the height of COVID and staffing our fire trucks was a nightmare. Also at that time, we had somewhere between eight and 10 people off the truck due to injury. And lastly, this involves B.C. Barton, the same supervisor who told me I deserved to be attacked at a fire station by a three-percenter. On Wednesday, May 5th, 2021, my crew was one of four crews that was to participate in high-rise training being run for that quarter. My crew was singled out from every other crew in my battalion, and I know this because I spoke to every other captain in my battalion, and was not switched out to participate in any other stations during that training. During my second time through the exact same evolution, I felt a twinge in my knee. I told the engineer who was monitoring, monitoring that part of the drill, he's the $200,000 engineer, that I was going to skip the simulated high-rise climb and meet them inside to go over the actual training part of training. This is where the previous information becomes relevant. Between the staffing issues and the amount of guys off the truck, our Employee Wellness Division recently put out a directive to be more aware of injuries. They specifically mentioned listening to your body during PT and training. Those two things combined with the fact that people have always been able to skip portions of training due to nagging injuries led me to believe there would be no issues. I was wrong. Battalion Chief Barton had asked Assistant Chief Gerard to come out of his office and come down to the training ground where they both talked to me. I explained to them what happened and that I had only skipped a grand total of three flights of stairs on my second time through this evolution. The following day, a Thursday, I worked 24 hours of OT. The days of the week matter. On Friday, the 7th, B.C. Barton came to my station to deliver the typewritten letter. Not a form, not a supervisor's report of injury, a typed-up letter. It was typed up because there was no policy that was violated and therefore no form. Everyone who works for the town of Gilbert knows there's a form for everything and the fact that there was no form, again, leads into the fact that there was no policy violation. The letter stated that, quote, "He was concerned with my ability to perform the physical functions of my job." What wasn't in the letter was the fact that he called me a derogatory term for a woman's genitals that rhymes with wussy. He didn't give me this later, this letter after the training exercise when I would have been able to contact the person he designated for me to contact. I was allowed to work the last 20 hours of that shift. He also didn't give me that letter the next day when I was, when I would have been able to contact the designee, when I was scheduled to work 24 hours of overtime on one of those fire trucks that we had a hard time staffing. Was it because of that fact that we couldn't staff our trucks? What he did do was he waited 44 hours after being so concerned about my ability to work that I had to go to a doctor, a cost that the town incurred to send me to OCH MED where I, I had to burn 48 hours of sick time because by now it was Friday and my next shift was Sunday. And as you know, the office personnel in Gilbert work four tans or in off Fridays. So I had to end up burning 48 hours of sick time. Come Monday, I was on a conference call with the HR person who was designated, who by the way, again, no surprise, is no longer with the town because we run through HR personnel like a hot knife through butter. B.C. Schweitzer from the Employee Wellness Division and my union rep. Everyone, everybody on that call was uncertain how to proceed because none of them had ever seen something like this. Needless to say, I was cleared within 10 minutes of seeing the doctor. I cannot stress to you how odd this was. If you were to talk to anyone who was involved with training as part of the Training Division, they will tell you since the beginning of time, time immemorial, people have been allowed to skip certain parts of training due to nagging injuries. But unfortunately for me, I was not part of the Training cadre, the guys we talked about before. As I've stated before, if you're not part of this particular clique, you will be treated differently, you will lose out on promotions and overtime opportunities, and you may just see your career derailed. As always, I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight and again, I ask you to speak to your firefighters. Don't just take my word for it. You'll probably hear a pretty similar story. And I'll see you guys in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you for your time tonight. I want to address the parking garage situation again and just to explain why your security situation is not going to work. I don't know that any of you guys have been down in the garage during the day or at night because when you have kids that are out for the summer, that place has been a hangout. And so when you're looking at staffing that garage only peak times, that means your Thursday, your Friday, and your Saturday, which has been tendency, has had a tendency to be your peak times. The kid fell off the garage at 11 o'clock at night on a Monday night. That was not a peak hour whatsoever. And to go back to the officers, unfortunately, what's happening is that your bike patrol, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we have brought it in, we have seen them multiple times standing around. So to go back, a week and a half ago, my friend and I went to downtown Gilbert for dinner. My friend's husband is also an officer and we, she went to go drop me off in the parking lot just south of Joe's. This was nine o'clock at night on a Friday night. There were at least eight to 10 officers all standing in a row just talking. They weren't in a huddle discussing any sort of law enforcement. They were standing straight in a row. And as soon as they saw me, they turned around and they took off and they all left. And I explained to the lieutenant that I spoke with, this looks really suspicious because it looks like your officers aren't doing anything. So you're paying to staff patrol officers who are doing their jobs at the top of the garage while your bike officers are standing on the ground, not patrolling your city. These are the same officers that were standing at Whiskey Row, talking for over an hour in front of there with the bouncers going on. Some of the very same officers. Your sergeant was in the middle of this group. So I don't know how there's going to become a resolution to this unless things start getting cracked down on. It is really important that our kids have a safe place here and when we have, we've seen the things that we have with the in and out, the, sorry, the cars going in and out of the garage, we know that they're being notified when officers are coming up and down. They're going to figure out a different way to work around this and especially when they figure out what your security staffing is like. I recently visited a different garage here in Gilbert and it's a, it is a private garage, but there wasn't one issue at night with any teenagers sitting up in the garage. And, and that garage had much more capability for people to hide in. And so why there's such a draw to this garage, I don't know, but it has been an issue for a while and you need to do something more. And that push for us is that there be paid parking and allow your patrons to get it validated when they go to a business because the kids who are up here hanging out, they're not going to want to pay for parking if you do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Dan Reynolds. I'm a longtime resident of Gilbert and a former employee. I want to talk to you guys tonight about my relationship with some of you. Some of you I just met tonight for the first time, some I've never met, but I want to, I want to do this because I want to explain something. Mayor Peterson, I've known you for, I'm going to guess, over 15 years, 20 years? I've been very supportive. I've voted for you. I think when the people were trying to oust you early on in your career, I was still very supportive and didn't agree with it. Vice Mayor Anderson, for people who don't know, you worked for the town 35 years ago, 30 years ago. I've known you since then, always thought the world of you, gotten along very well with you, never had a problem. I hope you feel the same way. Councilwoman Tilke, I knew you before you were actually a Tilke. And I've always had a good relationship with you. I've known your husband when he worked for the town. The reason I'm saying this is because I don't have an axe to grind. I'm not here to start trouble and I want people to understand that. Some of you other folks, I can't wait to get to know you a little better so I can explain some of the stuff that I've been coming up here to, to share with you. So I'm going to give you a phrase and I don't want you to get upset and I don't want you to think I'm aiming at you, but I call it admonishing the sinner. And I'm not saying you're sinners. Please don't get upset with that. But this, this phrase is, kind of lets me explain, this is to help me understand or help you understand the info that we've brought forward. It's how we can be honest with you guys. It's how we can be honest with you guys, and even if it's not easy, it's, it's to help us from making mistakes and holding people in this town accountable. That's what I mean by that. Hopefully you understand that makes sense. I think it was last council meeting, Mayor, you, you were upset with, I think, me, you were, you were looking my direction, and I'm going to paraphrase this, but you said something to the effect of, if you can't come here and say something nice, maybe you shouldn't say something at all. I, I get what you were saying, because Town of Gilbert is getting hammered with all kinds of bad things being said. So my thoughts are this. We need to address the problem. I've, I've brought information to you folks, and, and maybe you don't have, maybe you're not obligated to reach out to me, but I know you can find me if you want to, because there's things that are going on in this town that we have information on, I think you guys should know about it. Bob Dylan wrote a song, and it says, "You got to serve somebody." That's why, why we elected you folks, is, is to serve the citizens, and, and I believe I need to serve you guys too. It's not a one-way street, I get that. I'll, I'll wrap it up. Please don't get upset when I bring you this information. Look into what we're saying, what I'm saying, and make your own judgment based on the information I'm giving you. And you do some research and find out. I don't want you to think I'm lying, because I'm not. There's things that are going on in this town by some of our leadership people that need to be addressed. So I'm going to leave you with this. If our founding fathers and the citizens didn't speak up for the truth and the freedoms that we have today, we'd probably all be speaking with a British accent, and I don't think we want that. So I want to say I appreciate your time, and let your conscience be your guide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Stacy Lavelle?
So I'd like to address and recap the statement that the mayor read at the end of the communications from citizens at the town council meeting two weeks ago. It was a pre-written statement, maybe meant to make those of us speaking up look like the bad guys for invoking our First Amendment rights, or maybe to try to discredit us. Either way, I'd like to thank Steve, Dan, and Don, and the rest of you for continuing to speak up. Since you pre-wrote that statement, Mayor, it tells me you knew that we were coming to speak each week, and that in itself is a win. I look forward to your closing statement again tonight. My guess is that it will sound a lot like the one from two weeks ago, which I'm about to discuss. You stated you were, quote, "concerned with potential damage done to Gilbert's name, heart, and town organization by continued efforts of a few to highlight allegations, opinions, and false claims," unquote. First of all, yes, we are a few. There would probably be more, but many of them are protecting their jobs and identity, so we, the few, will continue to try to right the wrongs you refuse to address. Also, let me remind you that we have the proof behind everything we discuss. Therefore, you are inflicting potential damage by insinuating that our claims are allegations, opinions, and false. We have all the proof in forms of FOIA requests, remember? I'm sure you're all familiar. Continued efforts to highlight me and my fellow speakers as other than honest and true is defamation of character. Another quote, "The spoken word has the capacity to inflict damage," unquote. You know what else has the capacity to inflict damage? Continuing to pretend nothing is wrong. Continuing to ignore the issues and refusing to address them head-on, continuing to be a part of the problem and not part of the solution, also has the capacity to inflict damage. The next quote, "This community is facing pressing issues," unquote. You're absolutely right. So instead of trying to protect management at the expense of citizens and employees, how about you hold them accountable? Next quote, "I respect and welcome any and all efforts and energies that work to bring us together as a community, not those that divide us," end quote. I appreciate that you respect the time and energy that we put into speaking. Thank you, because we are here to unite the community, not divide it. We're here to bring the community together by speaking truth, exposing lies, and most importantly, we're here to try to, to light a fire underneath you, to do the hard work that needs to be done. Last quote, "I challenge us to be better humans to each other," end quote. I accept your challenge, as I think there's always room for kindness and encouragement. And in return, I challenge you to end your mayoral term on a high note, making the citizens proud to have elected a mayor that doesn't just follow, but asks hard questions, makes tough decisions, and protects everyone's rights, whether you agree with them or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Laval?
If you've been watching the news, you've seen the supposed Dr. Fauci speak, and we all know, they pushed a bunch of lies on us. COVID lies, vaccine lies, it's not a vaccine, it's a clot shot, more people are getting harmed physically by that shot. And we know that government, the federal government, the state government, and our local government are the ones pushing the miss and disinformation at us, the people. And we, the people, are standing up to it. So therefore, we get the resistance from our government, who's supposed to represent us, okay? Along with mainstream media and the Office of Digital Government, that misinformation got pushed, and pushed, and pushed, and the people who resisted it, like my fire engineer, and spoke the truth, well, they got pink slips. Get on the town, you got to leave. So you guys keep reporting back to a, a document, you call it a third party, okay? It's called Pierce Coleman. Patrick hired them with contract with the town. It's not a third party, it's contracted with the town. That document I have continually shot holes in, and all you guys say is it's just, it exonerates you, but you never address any of the holes I shoot. I've sent you some of the documents. You continue to say it exonerates you. That document does not exonerate you. That document is full of lies, not misinformation, they're lies. You guys are lying. It's called lying. Before we ever had misinformation, we had lying, okay? BLM, you were supporting BLM, you did support BLM, the town supported BLM, the police chief supported BLM, he took a knee for him. So here's the deal, I'm going to give you guys an opportunity. Chief Solberg, Rob Duggan, Patrick Manager, Council, Officer Targos, and Officer Shoehandler gave their lives in this community, and there's a lot of police officers giving their lives across this country for their communities. So I'm going to, I'm going to offer you guys an opportunity to come up here and take a knee with me for Officer Shoehandler and Officer Targos.
Thank you. To the officers in this room, first of all, ma'am, thank you very much for that. I appreciate your support. For the officers in this room, that's your leadership, that's your management, those are the ones that have your back, okay? Don't forget that.
You've done good.
I can't see you from up there. I thought you left.
Yeah.
You're acting like children, they'll come up and say something, and we go, oh, that is so pathetic. And then, you know, it's very odd, isn't it? You guys come up and test the, the police department, make sure they're doing what they're doing. Well, I don't see if I can say that I'm doing any investigation, because it's very hard to, you know. And, you know, I don't know if, if people, I don't know what they're doing, but I can feel that something is at here. I just know that I really have a kind of, you know, this is a kind of, I feel like we could come...